To the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Commission on November 17th, 2025, in the Municipal Building at 151 Martin Street, if you all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Valer?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Long?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Hague?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Cole?
Here.
Commissioner Kozowski?
Here.
Commissioner Therese Long?
Here.
Great. We have proclamations, congratulatory resolutions, awards, appointments, resignations, and confirmations, administration of oaths, introduction of guests and announcements. We have no announcements. We do have several appointments tonight. First up is the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we have two applicants, Carl Kona, who is already on the Board of Zoning Appeals, could not be here tonight, but he nonetheless would like to continue serving, and Susan Shackett. Hello, Ms. Shackett. How are you?
Good.
Good.
So I was here back in July.
Right.
And I applied for the Housing Board of Appeals. I see some new faces, so congratulations to them. And I was appointed, which I was happy about. However, I came to find out that the Housing Board of Appeals hasn't met for a long time. So I feel like I can't be of much use in a board that does not meet. Therefore, I saw there was openings in the zoning board of appeals, and I applied for that. To refresh some of you and some of you new people, so I am a licensed residential home builder. I have built within the city. I have lived within a few blocks of this building for the last 42 years. I guess I'm a lifer, and I have time now to give back to the community, and I could use my expertise in building to help out.
Great. Oh, I'm glad you want to do that.
So I could stay on both. I have time, but if that's not allowed, I could resign from the one that hasn't met for over 10 years.
Definitely can't be on something plus the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yeah.
Well, then I would resign from that where I'm of use.
Okay. And you understand that there are two openings, one's for a regular member and one is for an alternate. You applied for regular member.
Yes.
I trust you would be satisfied with being an alternate member?
Whatever suits you.
Okay. Well, I'll just point out that this board is a very important board, and it's probably a smart thing to do to be an alternate. If you're an alternate, you go to the meetings, and when somebody's not there, you participate. And then if you participate, correct me if I'm wrong, if you participate in a certain agenda item, and that item ever comes back, then you're expected to continue your participation with regard to that item. Is that correct? I think so. So with that, does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Shackett?
I just have one.
Sure.
You're a retired builder?
Yes.
You are not on retired?
I'm not hardly building within the city or anywhere, actually.
You're not building in the city anymore? Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Nominations?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Carl Kona to continue in his position as a regular member of the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve the remainder of a three-year term to end October 10th, 2028.
Second.
No second necessary on nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Another nomination? Commissioner Holmes?
I'd like to nominate Susan Shackett as the alternate member to the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve the remainder of a three-year term to October 10th, 2026.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. We move on to an appointment to the Design Review Board. That's for an alternate member. We have one applicant, Steve Sweeney. Is Mr. Sweeney present? Mr. Sweeney is not present. Mr. Sweeney is a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee. What is the pleasure of the board here, of the commission here?
May I make a suggestion?
Certainly.
We have to answer the question of whether he can be on both boards, and he's not here tonight, so why don't we get the answer to that, put it over, get the answer to that, and maybe we can advise him and/or he can appear at the next meeting.
So that would hopscotch one meeting? Would that interfere with the business of the Design Review Board in any way?
No, I don't believe so, and the next meeting would be December 1st.
Our meeting?
No.
Or the Design Review Board?
The next City Commission meeting is December 1st.
Would we make appointments at?
On the December 1st meeting?
Yeah. Irregular basis. Okay, sure. Does everyone agree that that's appropriate?
No.
Okay, so we'll take no action on that. The next appointment is for the Board of Review. We have a regular member to be appointed, and we have an applicant, William Watkins. Mr. Watkins, hello.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Commissioner, I'm currently an alternate member, and I saw there was an opening for a regular member, so I thought I would apply for that. I'm still a practicing attorney. I'm still looking for the state of Michigan as a magistrate. I feel my legal background will serve me well in this position, so thank you for your consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Watkins? Do I have a nomination?
I'll make a nomination if there isn't any questions.
Okay, please do.
I'd like to make a nomination to appoint William Watkins to the Board of Review as a regular member to serve the remainder of a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2027.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next up, we have appointment, this is a concurrence with the City Manager's appointments to the Birmingham Shopping District. There are two appointments, Beth Hussey and William Roberts. Mr. Roberts, pleasure to have you here.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Bill Roberts, I have 273 Pierce Street, which is street-side seafood, and I've been on the shopping board now for 28 years. I can't believe it, but time does fly. Through the course of time, I've been on the Executive Committee for probably a couple decades, and with new leadership, they put me back on a different committee at this point. But I plan on running my business, and I love to be involved with the city and know what's going on, and throw some ideas out once in a while, and it's been a great time. So the one thing, since I'm up here, I would like to, I know I haven't met many of the new commissioners, but one thing I will tell you is the restaurant industry is not the same after COVID. It's been a difficult time, and what we don't need in Birmingham are more liquor licenses. The pie is split into many, many, many pieces at this point. But, you know, as you all go to the grocery store, see the prices, you have people come to your home to fix the plumbing, the whatever, it's unbelievable, and this is the most difficult year I've ever had after, I moved into Pierce Street in 83. I bought Richard and Reese. Maybe a couple of you may know that restaurant. Eventually gutted it, got the liquor license, and turned it into street-side. So anyways, our industry needs help. Whenever you can help us, we appreciate it, and I'll just throw that out.
Thank you. Thank you, and we appreciate your long service.
You know, it's the best little, I call it the best little town in the state of Michigan. It's, I love Birmingham.
I'm gonna say that we should probably take a motion and a second on this?
You got Beth Hussey is on Zoom.
I don't think, is Beth Hussey here?
She's on Zoom.
Oh, she is? Oh, good. Ms. Hussey, would you like to tell us about your involvement with the BSD? Do I have to unmute her?
Nope.
There we go. I think I'm unmuted, and let's see, can I?
We can hear you.
You are. We can hear you.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I'm just excited to be a part of the Birmingham Board. I've been at it for a little while now, and I love it, and just happy to serve.
Great. Well, we're happy to have you serve, I think.
Yeah.
If I may comment, I talked Beth into it, and I get onto the board, and she's just a terrific member, and she's always doing things for the neighborhood and for the shopping district, so I think you would be making a wise choice to continue with Beth on our board.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you. So can we do this in one motion and second to concur in both appointments? Okay, would I, can someone give me a motion?
Give you a motion. I'd like to make a motion to concur with the City Manager's appointments of Beth Hussey and William Roberts to the Birmingham Shopping District Board as a regular member, a business representative with interest in property located in the district, to serve a four-year term to expire on November 16th, 2029.
Second.
Second. I think we can do this with a voice vote, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. None? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hussey.
Swearing in.
Okay.
Swearing in.
Swearing in?
I don't know. Are we gonna swear the man?
Yes.
Okay, let's swear.
There goes Alex. They have all the newly appointed board members that are present come forward, and then the ones that are online or were absent, we'll touch base with you later for your raise your hand. You'll say I do after. I do soundly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this state, and endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of Birmingham, free from parties to exchange or control, and to perform the duties of office of Board of Zoning Appeals, Board of Review, or Principal Shopping District according to the statute.
I did.
So you guys will want to sign and print, and I'll fill in the rest. Just sign and print. She's not like this. Yes. It's on you? Yes. Sign and print. Yep, sign and print. So I'll fill in the notes. Sign and print.
Okay, congratulations to the appointees. Thank you so much for your service. Next, we have staff introductions. I believe, Alex, you will introduce Hannah Fay Nasser.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. I'm thrilled to announce our newest intern in the Clerk's Office, Hannah Fay Nasser. She's a first-generation college graduate from MSU, James Madison College. She is also a Birmingham native. I definitely see lots of potential with her as a future leader, and she's been here for almost a month just before the election, and in just those few weeks, she's really impressed us with her abilities and really shown us that she has a lot of potential as a future leader in public service.
Excellent. Would you like to say anything?
Absolutely. Thank you, Alex. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. I am incredibly grateful to begin my journey of public service in the place I call home, which is Birmingham. It's been a joy working with Alex and the other members of the Clerk's Office, and I've already learned so much, because the Clerk's Office really just like is in everything. So I appreciate you taking the time to let me introduce myself tonight, and I'm looking forward to my future public service.
Welcome.
Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are open to the public for matters not on the agenda. So if you are online, use the raise your hand function, and we'll call on you, and if you are in the room, please tell us your name and your residency.
David Bloom. I'm a resident of Birmingham. I live on Wallace Street. Good evening to all of you. The reason I'm here tonight is to elaborate on some of the remarks that I made at the meeting last week, and my concerns regarding the vote selection for the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. These concerns fall into two veins. The first I would call hypocrisy, and the second I would term voter disenfranchisement, and I'll discuss my concerns for each of these in turn. I guess I'll start with hypocrisy. Maybe a year, year and a half ago, two years ago, our city attorney, Mary Kucherik, had advised the board, the City Commission, that discussions on topics before the board needed to all be handled in public and be transparent. I actually, at that point, had some disagreements with her on it. That was the advice that she had given this commission. The commission seemed to, and I know we have two new members now, seemed to take that advice to heart. I can recall when one of our commissioners, who's now Mayor Pro Tem, treating residents like schoolchildren, scolding them, lecturing them, that all discussion, everything has to be before the board. Nothing can be done in private. Maybe I'm a little bit old school. I know stuff happens behind closed doors. I actually don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem with is the apparent hypocrisy that I saw at the meeting. It looked to me, and I'm happy to stand corrected if I'm wrong, that the selection of the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem, and how it was done, and how the nominations happened, had all been pre-scripted out like Kabuki Theater ahead of time, beyond closed doors. There was no discussion among the commissioners about any of the candidates. And if you're gonna do that, you have the power to do it. It's political. I recall our new mayor saying at one point, everything is political, and I actually kind of agree with that. So I get it, you had the power to do it, and you did it, and that's fine. But please don't, if you're going to govern the way that the city attorney advised and have everything transparent, then be transparent. Have discussions. Do it all here. Don't make voters like me, residents, feel like everything was a done deal and a slam dunk before it even got to this meeting. So please pick one or the other, but don't do both, and don't pretend that, or make it look like you're pretending that you're being transparent when it appeared at the last meeting that you weren't. The second vein I'd like to address is voter disenfranchisement. Now, we have a tradition in our communities of the Mayor Pro Tem becoming the mayor, and I don't have a problem with that, as I said, and I actually like tradition and valuing traditions in this community, so I didn't have an issue with that. Okay? And that was the position of the mayor. The Mayor Pro Tem is another story. We have two other commissioners here who were the top vote-getters in their respective elections. One of the commissioners was the top vote-getter twice. The other one was the top vote-getter in the last election. There was no consideration for them being the Mayor Pro Tem. And if you want to think about it one way, those two commissioners are the most liked by the residents that elect them here. They wanted those people here. That's why they got the most votes. And the people that voted against that totally screwed them over. Not only screwed those people over, you disenfranchised the voters that elected all of you here. And that's disingenuous, and that's wrong. Again, it's power, it's politics, you guys had the power to do it, it happens all the time. But there are consequences to that, not necessarily consequences to you. You have to live with your conscience in your vote. I think you did the wrong thing. I think you disenfranchised this room, this body, and the voters that put you all here. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, we have the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and approved by a roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered under the last item of new business or sooner. Does anyone on the commission want to remove an item from the consent agenda? None. Does anyone in the public want to remove an item from the consent agenda? If you're online, on Zoom, you can use the raise your hand function. I see no one online, no one here, so let's take a roll call vote, please.
Should we have somebody move?
Oh, somebody have to move it.
I'll do that for you if you want.
Please.
I'll move the consent agenda, including items A through F.
Second. Great. Now we can do a roll call.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor Valer?
Yes.
Commissioner Kozowski?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Cole?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
Commissioner Therese Long?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving ahead to the City Manager's Report.
Yes, and I have been asked to shorten this up a little bit, so hopefully you've all read it, but I will still touch on some of the key points in here. From the Baldwin Public Library, we have the retirement of board member Melissa Mark after eight years of service to the library. And then for any of you that may have attended, there was a reception just before this meeting for Rebecca Kraft, for the Michigan Libraries Association's 2025 Public Librarian of the Year. So that was very nice, and for any of you that went over, at least in the beginning, Doug Kostick, the former director of the library, was also there, as were Rebecca's parents, so it was nice to see that that was put on for her. Also, with regards to the library, the closure for Thanksgiving, they'll close at 5:30 on Wednesday, which is earlier than normal on a Wednesday, and they'll be closed Thursday and Friday. With respect to the Birmingham Museum, Allen House is closed right now because they're changing exhibits, but Hunter House will remain open during the holidays, and there's a new experience, and I was lucky enough to attend one of these candlelight tours of the Hunter House last week. Well, I think it was last week, I think it was last Thursday. And there's a little bit of ghost stories involved there and a lot of history, so if you get the chance to attend, I would definitely encourage it. From the Birmingham Shopping District, also coming up to a very busy season with the holidays and all of the special events that are going on, kicking off on November 29th is Small Business Saturday and Santa Walk, and then the Santa House has been delivered to Shane Park, as you know, or as you may have seen, and so that'll all start kicking off on November 29th, all the way through December 24th. Also, from the Birmingham Shopping District, October closed off the Birmingham Burger Competition. We have a winner. It's Tara Kitchen and Cocktails. There were 19 participating restaurants, and there were a top five restaurants where Tara, which was first, Adachi, Ely's, Bell Bistro, and Hazel's at number five. Also, from the BSD, some new businesses that are coming in. RH Gallery at 300 South Old Woodward, as you know, will be opening this week. Red Van Lee at 203 East Maple, and then coming up in 2016, Viori, Rag &amp; Bone, Design Within Reach, Streetbeat, and Cashin Izakaya, which I think you reviewed not too long ago. So we do have a lot of new retail and restaurants coming to town. The Building Department, I'll just highlight that there is a monthly report for all of the building activity that you can get through the link in the manager's office, so feel free to check that out. Again, from the Clerk's Office, a thank you again to city staff, to Alex and her team, and all of the local election inspectors that helped us out, and we had a successful election on November 4th. From the manager's office, just an update, we get calls about this all the time, the 2026 calendar is in the works, so it'll be coming out mid-December. Believe it or not, a lot of people call about this because they wonder where their calendar is, so that's coming out, and this edition features our patriotic logo and the special then-and-now images to kind of show as we celebrate our history moving forward. Good news from the Engineering Department, I'll touch on, we were awarded a grant in the amount of $2.8 million from the 2025 Michigan Local Bridge Program, I shouldn't say the grant, but funding from that program for the Derby Road Bridge over the railroad tracks, so that will significantly reduce the amount that the city has to pay to do that work. From the Fire Department, an update, just to mention that this year, in addition to fighting fires and dealing with medical emergencies, car accidents, et cetera, they also have the Fire Prevention Bureau and the Community Risk Reduction Officer that go around and check out all of the businesses to make sure everybody's compliant with the fire code. They also go out and reach out to residents and help them with their fire alarms, carbon monoxide detectors and the like. So just want to highlight that of the 1,800 businesses in town, they've conducted 1,271 annual inspections to date this year, so they've gotten around to almost all of them, and they've engaged with 27 I'll touch on, we were awarded a grant in the amount of $2.8 million from the 2025 Michigan Local Bridge Program. I shouldn't say the grant, but funding from that program for the Derby Road Bridge over the railroad tracks, so that will significantly reduce the amount that the city has to pay to do that work. From the Fire Department, an update, just to mention that this year, in addition to fighting fires and dealing with medical emergencies, car accidents, et cetera, they also have the Fire Prevention Bureau and the Community Risk Reduction Officer that go around and check out all of the businesses to make sure everybody's compliant with the fire code. They also go out and reach out to residents and help them with their fire alarms, carbon monoxide detectors and the like. So just want to highlight that of the 1,800 businesses in town, they've conducted 1,271 annual inspections to date this year. So they've gotten around to almost all of them, and they've engaged with 2,700 residents to assist them with fire prevention. From the Human Resources Department, I just want to point out two employees that are celebrating over 20 years with the city of Birmingham. Susan Dion from the library, who is at 20 years, she's a librarian, and Lawrence DiMaggio at DPS, he's our water meter guy in the water meter shop, and he is celebrating 24 years. So congratulations to them. From the Planning Department, the one thing I wanted to touch on was the Historic District Commission and Design Review Board. I've mentioned they're working on a historic preservation master plan. That'll be coming to you in the next month or two. And also, because this has been in the news and everybody's curious, they also did review the Hunter House that is moving to the Kentucky Fried Chicken location on Woodward, and they're doing facade improvements to that building. So they did review at least the facade improvements there. So that is moving ahead. An update from the Police Department, they wanted to let you know that they were successful in working with MDOT and the Rose Commission for Oakland County to get several of the crosswalks along Woodward improved. A lot of the painting was fading out, and as you know, we do new line painting and striping in crosswalks twice a year, every spring and every fall. So while they go through looking at the condition of ours, they also noticed that those ones were in disrepair, and so they did get them to go out and do that repair work. So a lot of the crosswalks along Woodward have been improved that were in poor condition previously. From the Parking Department, again, there's a parking report that you can get through the manager's report if you want to see all the statistics on the usage of the parking structures. Couple of things, the Chester Garage Repair Project is coming along. There's still a little bit left to do, but not much, we're wrapping up the final parts. And then also, you may see around town, the Safety Stick Program that we are now putting in place, and essentially, it's literally a stick that monitors and takes pictures of license plates of cars that are parked in no parking zones. So for instance, at a yellow curb site or in the 15-minute parking areas. And what that does is it automatically mails a ticket if somebody stays, is parked illegally or stays above their allotted length of time. They'll get a ticket and mail. So the city continues to receive the citation revenue, but the parking system that we're using, they actually collect a fee for each of these. So it does help out. They were in a test program for a while. They were working well, so we have expanded it a little bit. How's that for brief?
It's pretty good. Any questions from the commission on the manager's report? Seeing none, we'll move along to unfinished business. There is none. We're going to move to new business. We have a public hearing for the 2026-27 Community Development Block Grant Application. I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:59 PM at City Hall, Birmingham, 151 Martin Street, 48009. Staff report, please.
Good evening, City Commission and everyone here tonight. My name is Mary Chavez, and I'm the Finance Director. I would like to share a brief update on our CDBG funding. Each year, we receive an allocation of CDBG funds through Oakland County. This year, our planning allocation is over $34,000, and this is the same as last year. There is one change I have to point out, and that is the funding is not guaranteed, and that's because of the new guidelines directly from Oakland County. They made that change. And as a reminder, we can only allocate funding to two activities, and that's why you see the two activities. For public services, yard services, and then to remove architectural barriers. No crowd there, writing public comments.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public, either in the room or online on Zoom, who would like to comment during, on this Community Development Block Grant Application? No one in the room. I see no one online. Use the raise your hand function online if you'd like to speak. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 8:01 PM and ask if the commission has any questions or comments on the application.
No question.
None?
What?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. What qualifies as yard services?
Yard services, oh, pickup, leaf pickup.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make the suggested action.
I'll second.
I think...
I'm going to read it.
Oh, you're going to read it?
Yes.
This is one of those.
You paused, I apologize. I'm trying to move things forward. I jumped ahead, I apologize.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the program year 2026 Community Development Block Grant Application with the following projects and respective allocations. Activity number one, public services, yard services, in the amount of $5,107. And activity two, removing architectural barriers at the museum park in the amount of $28,945, totaling $34,052. And authorize the city manager to sign the application, conflict of interest certification affidavit of compliance, sub-recipient agreement when available, and other documents resulting from this application on behalf of the city, and submit the documents to Oakland County.
Second.
Do we need the... Did you already read that into the record?
Mm-hmm. Yes, she did.
Ms. Dain?
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Kozowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Commissioner Cole?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
Commissioner Therese Long?
Yes.
Mayor Ballot?
Yes. Good. Next up, we have a resolution to approve the playground layout design for Poppleton Park and purchase of playground equipment through Landscape Structures with Sourcewell Cooperative purchase pricing in the amount of $516,000 and change. Installation of equipment, accessible pathways, site furnishings, for total purchase price not to exceed $1.7 million and change. Ms. Laird?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Commission. I'm Carrie Laird, Parks and Recreation Manager. Let me get the screen on full screen. And with me this evening, we have Scott Zielinski, DPS Director, and Lance Shipman with Pinchura. And so, City Commission, you have not been formally introduced to Pinchura. So Lance will be completing that introduction this evening and also presenting the proposed plan for Poppleton play area. So I'm going to start with a little bit of background and some key points that was included in the agenda packet for this evening. So in April of 2025, the City Commission approved an agreement with Pinchura for playground services. And so that includes the design of, the purchase of the equipment, and the installation and project oversight for playgrounds in the city as part of our citywide playground improvement project, which is a priority from the Parks and Recreation Bond. So with that, Pinchura offers and has the ability to create and has the expertise for inclusive play areas, which are recommended by our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And the equipment that they offer is from Landscape Structures. They are available, that Landscape Structures equipment is available through Cooperative Purchasing Program, Sourcewell, and the city belongs to that, and also comes with very comprehensive warranties. The equipment is also located in our park system currently at Shane Park and Adams Park, and we've actually converted all of our swing belts to the Landscape Structure belt due to its durability and low maintenance requirements. Their installers are Michigan Recreation Construction, who completed the work at Adams Park in its entirety. So everything from the playground to the sidewalks to the shade structure, all of it was done by MRC. And so they're very capable, and they're also certified playground installers, which is important because not all playground installers are certified. And we wanted to make sure our playgrounds, you know, were installed to the national playground safety standards. Okay. They also, lastly, have teamed up with dual landscape architecture to offer any design needs that they don't typically do a little bit outside of their normal scope, things like parking designs and topographical surveys and things like that. So we kicked off the citywide playground improvements with Lincoln Well and Pump House, and Lincoln Well was just recently opened late last week. We've had a lot of visitors already. Hopefully, you've had a chance to stop by and see it. And Pump House is due to be open here in the next week or so as well. And so we're continuing on. Poppleton is next. Pembroke is coming soon, also budgeted for this fiscal year. And in fact, it wasn't included in the manager's report because the deadline was quite early this time, but we are planning for a public input session at our December Parks and Recreation Board Meeting for Pembroke. So we're rolling. Poppleton, it was always intended and envisioned to be the city's first fully inclusive and accessible play area. And so the design includes accessible pathways, solid surfacing throughout the play equipment. Shade elements are included in the proposed design, trees, the addition of trees, keeping existing trees and then adding more trees, and gathering space, benches, seating areas. There are a lot of wheelchair-accessible items as part of this playground project as well, and it does include an accessible tower structure as part of the design, too. I don't want to take too much away from Lance, he's can't wait to come up. So very designed for inclusivity and accessibility. We held a public input session at our August Parks and Recreation Board Meeting. It was very highly promoted. We wanted to reach residents from all over the city because it is a community park, and it was very well attended. We also had an engaged survey for Poppleton improvements during the month of August, and we talked about Poppleton at our September Parks and Recreation Board Meeting. We came back with modifications of what was originally proposed in August. And then again, in October, a final draft concept plan was presented to the Parks and Recreation Board. At those two meetings, we also had some discussion about offering ADA parking along Oxford Street. And so after Lance presents, Scott is going to dive in a little bit more about what those discussions entailed, the different options that were presented, and what the Parks and Recreation Board recommended. And then with all of our projects, playgrounds or otherwise, we take a look at what types of inclusive items that we can include. And Poppleton checks several of the boxes that you see on the screen. There's spaces for rest, lots of benches, shade elements. Landscape Structures offers a variety of equipment throughout our park system. It does include, the proposed design includes walking paths, a drinking fountain, a cool mist station, and for restrooms, it designates an area for temporary 80 accessible restrooms at this time. A permanent restroom facility was not part of this design, but it could be, the location that was selected could be converted at a later time to a more permanent restroom facility if we, you know, as part of a future phase project for Poppleton. And we also consider sustainability items. So we're including recycling, the equipment from Landscape Structures is very sustainable. We're including trees, like I mentioned, native trees, and no rain gardens at this time, but again, could be a future phase of Poppleton improvements. Okay, like I mentioned, we had great attendance at our public input session, and we heard from residents and the community that accessibility is important. We had a member, or a representative, I should say, of the Daisy Project, a special needs nonprofit, attend our August meeting, and she was actually invited to the meeting by one of our Parks and Recreation Board members who has a wheelchair-bound child. She had really positive things to say about the proposed design. She thought that we were, she was excited to see all the different features of the proposed plan, and she also said that, you know, it's at a later date, she had a recommendation of potentially adding a changing area to the restroom facility should we go forward with a permanent facility for restrooms. We also heard from residents in the area with a wheelchair-bound eight-year-old daughter, Rose, who were so excited to see the proposed design and, in particular, the solid safety material under the play area, because it really does promote wheelchair accessibility compared to the woodchips. She also was very excited to see the wheelchair-accessible elements that were included as part of the design. We also heard from a neighborhood family who have a young man, a son, who is an autistic young man, and he utilizes the tall swings that are existing at Poppleton on a daily basis. And it really was amazing to see the amount of support from the neighbors about this young man and wanting to provide for the tallest possible swings. We have to have them. And who doesn't love tall swings, though? I mean, they're so much fun. The higher the better. So this plan does incorporate the tallest possible swings in the design. We have to have a sandbox, and so you'll see that in the design. We need to provide equipment for all ages, so there is equipment for the two-to-five-year-old age group and the five-to-12-year-old group. Plenty of seating is very important, plenty of shade, keep the existing trees. We must provide monkey bars, so you'll see an overhead ladder, that's the technical term, included in the plan, spinners. And then also, it was suggested that it might be a good idea to add some color to the shade elements that are in the design, so you can, you know, meet your friends at the Blue Umbrella. So we've done that as well. There was, I'm going to take a, just a drink here. We had some concern, quite a bit of concern with the height of the structure, because it is pretty significant. Like I mentioned, it is fully accessible all the way to its highest point, and includes two 20-foot slides from the tower. We also heard that, you know, parents may not be able to see their children from ground level, and that it was just too big, really. We went, staff, myself included, took a trip out to Dearborn to visit a similar structure located at Lepire Park, and we did confirm that you can see the top of the tower from ground level. We spoke with some of the parents that were there on site and asked about any concerns that they may have had, and they really didn't have any. They said that they could see them just fine, and they said that their kids loved it. And we tried it out, and it's a lot of fun. So we did hear more about other improvements to the park as well. People asked about, you know, could there be something more done with the softball field? A lot of people wanted to see more walking paths throughout the entire park. A basketball court was mentioned. People wanted to see some fitness equipment. And those items, it was all really great feedback. Potentially, at a future date, we could come back with more improvements to Poppleton Park, but at this time, we're, you know, preparing for the priority projects from the Parks and Recreation Bond. So you won't see any of those items included in the design that you'll see this evening. And we currently have budgeted this fiscal year, Poppleton Park, for the amount of $1 million. And this was based on what was originally... And this was based on what was originally designated as part of the Parks and Recreation Bond project allocations. That is an estimate from 2019, 2020 timeframe. And the cost estimate for the design as proposed is just over 1.7 million. We do have a donation agreement with Birmingham Rotary Club in the amount of $50,000 in honor of their 100-year anniversary. And we do plan to proceed with another donation campaign similar to what we are doing for other park projects as well. With that, I'll hand it over to Lance.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Lance Shipman. A little bit about me, I'll keep it quick. I'm a landscape architect by trade, but I've been in the recreation industry for going on 30-plus years and with Pensura since 2010. So basically kind of focused in on to the recreation side of the business. We are a Michigan-based company. We cover Michigan and Ohio. I myself cover Wayne, Oakland, Macomb County, and I live in South Line. So I am a local, I shouldn't say too local, but not too far resident, which helps out. So at any point in time, whether it's during construction, after construction, years from now, I'm reachable, approachable, and making sure that things are kept up and running and can be addressed. The primary folks involved in this project as far as manufacturers, we will be, you will be seeing Landscape Structures Playground Equipment. They are based out of Delano, Minnesota. So everything is tried, tested, approved, all here in the States and manufactured in the States. It is one, it is the only employee-owned playground manufacturer. And I bring that up because that lends to the quality. So the guys and gals that are drilling holes and making wells actually own a piece of the company. They care about what they do. The example I love to give is my father was an engineer and they had a plant, you know, like a manufacturing facility, and they would do tours. And every time they'd come through, it'd be like, ah, people are coming through. I just want to work. Why are these people coming through? I remember my first time at Landscape Structures and it was the exact opposite. There, it's more of come in, let me show you what I'm doing and why we're doing it. Because they do all what I call the little things that help the equipment last longer, perform better. There's things like pushings put in so that those can be replaceable instead of having to replace the entire part as it wears because moving parts will wear. So that's designed into the product so that it can keep running. Just things like that just make the culture totally different. So I'm very happy to support them and I can stand behind every product that we produce without question. We are also the Do More Rep, which is existing in your city and continues to be used as your primary bench in both the city and the parks. And then we also represent a shelter company, which is Polygon, which is based out of Holland, Michigan. It's probably the premier known shelter company in the industry, one of the originals and still running strong. So the biggest part of that is, you'll see up there now is our warranty. We have the highest warranty in the industry, which again, leads to the longevity of the equipment. Everything is covered by specific years, up to 100 years on some products. If you are in business with manufacturer and if it says lifetime, that can mean whatever they want it to be. If it breaks, that could be the end of its lifetime. So that's why we specify it in years so that it's very defined and there's no gray area there. Moving on. We are involved in purchasing contracts. In this case, we're utilizing Sourcewell for the purchase of the equipment, which the city of Birmingham is involved with. It's a great opportunity to take advantage of that. You can get pencils to fire trucks. In this case, we're using it for the playground equipment. And the luxury is that it comes with a discount associated with that because we had to bid to be on that contract and offer that discount as part of being on the contract. So that aids in the cost of the equipment specifically. We do have a lot of local experience, including here in Birmingham. As already mentioned, the several parks that are, that we're involved with here. But all around, metro parks, city parks, school parks, even preschools, lots of equipment that I'd be happy if somebody needs locations to go take a look at. We are present around quite a few places, so happy to show you that. So Poppleton Park, this was fun for me to get involved with. I believe there's been talks about it for several years. So I've had this vision for a long time, just, you know, and then finally the time came to start developing a project. And part of that is us, I'm very pleased that we were selected to be a playground provider to the city. So this is the third project in that phase. We were, we also were the provider to Adams Park, which was done a little bit different, through a different mechanism, but we were the supplier for that as well. So Poppleton Park, this is the primary park within the city in terms of being the largest park in the city. And the desire for this park was to be an inclusive park for all users, all abilities, all age groups as far as playgrounds goes. So we got into it, did some development of that. And this is what we came up with after reviews, survey feedback. So this has been tweaked probably two or three times from its original conception to try to address and accommodate things that were brought up as important features for this city. Because I always say, I might have an opinion, but you folks and the residents here know better about what's best for this community than even I would. So I always receive that equipment, employ that into the design so that we can get to what the city deserves in itself. Next. This is an aerial view, kind of in color, just to kind of see how it fits into the park, what we're showing in there. You can see the existing and proposed trees in there as well. So you can see how it's kind of nestled into that open space in the middle with an arrival. This is the overall master plan of the park. So you can see the sidewalk system basically circulating the area. Primary central area for the playground. We've got a shelter, a 30 by 30 shade shelter. In that position there, kind of lower left, we're showing the restroom pad at this point in the lower right in order to accommodate some temporary restrooms. And then the sidewalk connections all throughout. We've also included a circular pattern just for gathering space. It would be lawn, but you could run festivals there or do, put up tents, do whatever could be done at any given time. And just as a background, this actually reflects pretty closely the master plan that had been done for this park several years ago. So while we may have tweaked some shapes a little bit, it's really in keeping spirit with what was developed back then. This is again, that top-down view as you would see it with the park. This is looking west. So this would be the primary street entry coming into the park. You can see there's sidewalk access from multiple locations to either go directly into the playground or to circulate the park as you see fit. Another view looking to the south, actually looking southeast a little bit. You can see how that sits in there. And this is a view looking north. We've got a lot of imagery, so I'll probably go through these fairly quickly unless you want me to stop at something specific as we're going. We'll kind of hone in closer to the playground equipment as this goes along. Again, this is a view looking northwest, looking across the shelter. Oh no, I'm sorry, that was correct.
Yep.
So this, now we're focusing in on just the playground itself. So this is the overall view of the playground. The primary structure that's in here, you'll see in the middle, is our Bolo Air. This is an absolute game changer when it comes to inclusivity and playground use. I'm very proud of this piece of equipment. It was introduced last year. There's always been talks of getting tall with any playground, just because they want visibility, wants to be seen. Kids love to get tall, all that. And there's always been the challenge of with inclusivity, how do we manage that unless it's got miles of ramps? And I've done projects with lots of ramps to get children up to certain heights. This is a different mechanism to try to accomplish that. Traditional play structures have posts and decks, so lots of decks, lots of transfer by step. In this case, we have a new product that was introduced and it's patented. It's called our Flex Net. And that Flex Net provides an ability to put something on a slope that offers children with any ability to navigate two different height levels by way of transfer or crawl or scoot, or however they can manage to do that. So it's got openings that's much smaller than say a cargo net, which obviously legs fall through, very hard to navigate. You can't really lay across it, it's not comfortable. This in itself has much more navigability and it allows, allows fully accessible tower all the way to its 20-foot slide that's up at the top. That's unheard of in the industry. Normally you'll see towers that are labeled as inclusive towers, but maybe the lower parts are considered inclusive. There's some things they can reach from the ground. But in this case, we've offered an ability to get all the way up to its highest point and be accessible. In addition to that, we have wheelchair accessible merry-go-round. So those that can't get out of their wheelchairs can take part in that along with others and their parents or caregivers. We have a wheelchair accessible swing. It does actually swing. Some may view it more like a glider, but it is an actual swing because it does have a pendulum point. It's not just side to side. So we do have some specific wheelchair accessible elements for those that unfortunately can't get out of the wheelchair in addition to the ground-level elements that they would be able to reach as well. So there's lots of interactive play here. Everything's all mixed together. We have our new flex swing in there, which is using that netting material in a swing form. So it'll support body support, laying back. Really cool experience. I swung on it and it's amazing. I love it. We've got shade, we've got sensory walls. So specific items that were mentioned earlier. We do have a 10-foot swing in here, which is taller than the standard, which is eight foot. I believe the one that's existing out there may be a 12, and those are kind of going by the wayside for several reasons. And most manufacturers aren't even making them anymore. The ones that I even looked up quickly to see what I could find are more mail-order type. So a lot of those, you start to have to question the codes and, you know, where's it coming from? Does it meet the US ASTM codes for playground safety? And then you also have to get larger in your footprint for the safety zone. And you have to get deeper in the safety zone because now you're trying to attenuate a 12-foot fall as opposed to a 10 or eight-foot fall. And there's lots of difficulty in getting to a 12-foot fall in surfacing. That kind of starts to stretch the maximum. So Landscape Structures tallest swing is a 10-foot swing. So that's what we have provided in here. There are four swing seats in with that, in addition to the eight-foot swing sets we have on the opposite side. So we've offered that opportunity. The monkey bars, or in our words, the overhead ladder is the piece all the way to the right. So we added that by request to have in there as well. In addition to the spinners that are all located in the middle, there's technically four different spinners, including the merry-go-round. So single person, multi-person, several persons, all can spin. Spinning's very important for kids, not necessarily for us. We get a little queasy after a few spins around. Children, even up through the 12-year age group, their inner ears aren't fully developed yet. So they don't feel it the same way we do. In fact, I always bring up that my child had, at daycare, they had spinners there and there was a little girl there that would actually get in, get herself spinning and actually fall asleep. It was soothing to her to spin like that. And then in addition to that, studies show with kids that after spinning, it actually resets the brain. They can better receive information, so really, especially on school playgrounds, spinning is actually super important because they come back into the classroom and can receive information more freely than they did before. Kind of a cool little side effect of that, that we don't necessarily feel as adults, but kids do. We can probably go to the next one to start showing the, this is just a colored version to help sort of pick out without all the extra lines and wording on there. That's a closer-in version. So this would be approaching from the east, so just to show that we have the sidewalk approach, what this might look like. Part of what we also do a little bit is you don't always want everything in your face. Sometimes it's great to have a little mystery, a little intrigue to draw people into the park. Let's go see what that, I can see that there's something in there. Let's go see what that is in there. And they follow the park, follow sidewalks in there to do that. So we try to create a little bit of that. This is that tower in there. On the left, you can see the we-go swing a little bit. In the middle is the tower. So this is again, that approach from the east. As you're getting closer, it starts to emerge. Now you can see the sandbox, which is the first thing from this particular entry that you would run into. There's a shade over that sandbox and a digger in that sandbox that's wheelchair accessible. And then you see the tower in there. Tower from, as we're going around, so that's a little bit different view. You can see how it's still kind of nestled into the trees. This is the opposite side coming in. So in this area, you'll see another shade here with accessible picnic tables and a couple benches. So we do have resting points for folks, either watching kids there or if the kids want to, they could have a little snack at the table. And I'll be around there in addition to the benches that are around the playground as well. This is an angle showing the shelter. In this case, we're showing a two-tier standard 30 by 30 shelter. So it's kind of the first step up from just a standard single-tier hip. This adds a little bit of character. It could certainly go well above that with lots of ornamentation in that. But in reality is that's not always warranted unless it's specifically requested to have additional ornamentation on there. So this is a view coming from the south, approaching the shelter, continuing along the path there, continuing. This is an area, you'll see this bright blue piece in the middle. And I apologize, I didn't mention it earlier. This is a swinging bench. It was also part of a lot of discussion in all of the surveys to have a glider or swinging bench or some form of that. So we do have that included in the plan. And that is where that sits. As we go further, approaching it more, keep going through these. So now we're up to the playground. This is the wheelchair accessible swing. It's got a nice little ramp to get on there. So there's a spot for a wheelchair on one side and a bench on the other so they can swing with their friends, with their family. You can also back in or spin around a wheelchair in the very middle. So you can actually accommodate two wheelchairs on that swing if you wanted to. Another view of that, on the right, you can see the monkey bars there. So this is looking through the monkey bars into the tower area. Those are the 10-foot swings you see there with the tower in the back and the sandbox on the right. Now you're looking straight at the sandbox. This is a great view of Bolo Air. You can see the complexity of what's going on there. It can house a ton of kids with lots of different varieties of play activity, from very easy to a little bit challenging, which is what you want out there because you want to challenge everybody. I think we spin around this a little bit. Yep, this is from the other side. There are a total of four slides on this, I believe. We used that one, one, two, three, four, yeah. So you're seeing the two tall tube slides, there's our smaller in the middle, which is actually a quite big slide, our avalanche slide. And then we'll spin around and there's a double slide on the other side as well. More views, this is that seating area. In this area, this is kind of where our two-to-five area is, or the younger child area. So we have a Wii saw, which is also an acceptable seesaw for those that can transfer out of a wheelchair. We have a sensory wall here that you see on the right. So anybody, including those that cannot accept their wheelchair, can utilize that element. And in the background of that is our small, little motion play structure that's in there for the little guys. There is a, there's that sensory wall, tower in the background. This is coming in from the primary entry. So you can see how that tower exposes itself in there. And then you can also see a communication sign that we have in there to help children communicate that might have the need to either sign or point out pictures to be able to communicate. This is a little bit up close picture of that two-to-five structure, our smart play motion structure. There's actually 16 elements of play on there. So there's a lot going on in a little space. There's even a little matchbox car track on there. If they were to bring their little cars out, they can roll down. This is a closer-in picture of the Bolo Air. You can see that double slide that you couldn't see from the other image. see from the other image, and you can also see the visibility up through it, and all the different challenges and different things inside that tower, which make it really cool. Another angle of that. So I know that was a lot, lots of imagery, but we wanted to go through and, and show the complexity of what's going on there. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have, to any part of this, whether it's the play equipment or the park layout and design itself, or anything you might want to know.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for a very thorough report, both of you. We are now going to hear about parking, is that right?
Yeah, so the, as part of this, you know, it's a community park, but it does a butt right up next to a neighborhood, and we've recognized that this grand level of a playground is going to draw attention. And because of that, we wanted to look at opportunities to improve parking in this area. It was always a part of our plan on this for this year's budget to ensure that we had money to try to address this. So we looked at, and what we presented in the package here was like, the most to the least that we could be doing in this area. The least obviously being that we wouldn't do any additional parking, but that could add complications when you have people who are, you would still need to add access points for ADA accessibility. We would still be doing work with the sidewalk to ensure everything's right, and we would likely still have to evaluate the existing roadway to make sure that the cross slope meets the exact standards for ADA. So we would likely still be spending money in some way tearing this up to ensure even at just keeping it the road width, that we, we'd have to make improvements in this area. We haven't officially done surveys and stuff because we kind of wanted to get a feel for where the commission wanted to go with this. With talking, talking with the Parks Board and talking to the representatives for multimodal from the city staff, there was, both agreed that getting some parking that wasn't directly in the street is the safest, best option to, to address the needs of the park, with a focus being what the Parks Board pushed for, was a focus on just making sure the ADA people were being taken care of. So initially, we looked at, there was approximately nine spaces, I believe, if you go parallel for ensuring that there's ADA accessible spaces, and that it was 12 to 15?
Twelve.
Twelve, if you did angled. But the problem with angled is, the picture's in here now.
Yep.
So this is the basic limits we would have of where the new sidewalk would be for parallel, and then, we would then all of a sudden be getting into our trees with angled spaces to set the new sidewalk. And the way we were looking at this was the sidewalk would be a carriage walk immediately along the edge of the curb. So that's why the average, everybody from the Parks Board to city staff agreed, if we're trying to create space off the roadway to help keep the road a little more two-way traffic ease accessible and put a little less impact on the residents in the area, that the parallel parking spots made the most sense because impacts the park the least amount while providing that safe space. So the existing roadway here is approximately 24 feet curb face to curb face. Typical parking spot is about eight feet wide, which would only leave us 16 feet for two-way traffic if we were to eliminate parking on the far side, which was an idea that had come up. The problem with that is the impact it has to the neighborhood, in my opinion. And we're trying not to impact them as best we can, so if we cut in, because we have to do work anyways to make sure this is ADA appropriate, we believe that this would allow more space. Now, could we still consider limiting parking to one side? Yes, and that would provide ample room for two-way traffic to ensure emergency services would never have an issue getting through that sort of thing. But that's why we ultimately were coming to you guys to get input as to, how many spaces should we do? Parks Board recommended five spaces for this protected area. That's the reason why we wrote it the way we did of saying five spaces, up to $80,000 approved. That, there's some leeway in there to where if you were to say, yes, give us X number of ADA accessible spaces, let's do that, but also if there's money in the budget, add some regular spaces in there so that regular people can park in that edge area too. We would be happy to evaluate that and get that as part of the final design, but the goal will not exceed $80,000 in what we'd be tearing up to make that happen. The basis of space that we went for on these parallel spaces was based off of a 13-foot wide parking space to ensure ample room for getting wheelchairs in and out, getting carts in and out for the baby strollers, add that sort of thing to ensure that there's no, not going to be an issue for the safety of those trying to use the park in those spots. And like I said, we focused on ADA. There's not a set requirement, it was just, in discussions with the park board and the public, it became apparent that if we're going to provide the safe space, we wanted to focus on ADA first because that's the intent of this fully inclusive park. So, that's how we got to MRR.
Great, thank you. I think what we ought to do is, for reasons I'll explain later, as soon as we feel comfortable, I think I'd like to hear a motion on this. But I wouldn't, maybe that's two motions, one on the playground and one on the parking. I think we should separate the discussion and talk about the playground first, and so, I think we could, we could, whenever we make the motion on that, the sooner the better. So.
Well, I'd be delighted to make the motion on the park.
On the playground.
On the playground, yes, if you're ready for that.
Can I ask a question first?
Yeah, I have a question too.
Well, when someone wants to make a motion, I have to let them make the motion.
I'm supposed to have questions of the presentation first?
Like I said, I'll explain my reasoning during the next agenda item, but there is a motion being made, so that interrupts everything and there's nothing I can do about it.
And then there could be questions on the, on the motion and on the, on the park. So, as a preamble, I was first involved with this on the Parks and Rec Board and as we, we created the estimate for the Parks Bond. Delighted that this has finally come to us, I think it's an excellent design, it's happy, it's, it's wonderful to be able to fulfill the promise to the community that we made when they voted to support the Parks Bond back in 2020. So I would like to make a motion adopting a resolution to approve the playground layout design for Poppleton Park and purchase of playground equipment through Landscape Structures Incorporated with Sourcewell comparative pricing, purchase pricing in the amount of $516,164.35, the installation of equipment, accessible pathways and site furnishings by Pentura LLC in the amount of $1,194,957.08, for a total purchase price not to exceed And in addition to appropriate and amend the 25-26 budget as follows, revenues drawing from fund balance from the Park System Construction Fund of $711,121.43, and expenditures from the Park System Construction Fund for $711,121.43.
Second.
Okay, so now we have something to talk about. As the maker of the motion, I'm going to give you the first opportunity to speak up.
I don't have any particular questions, other than to say, you, when we, when we put the placeholder for this pricing back in 2019, obviously costs are a lot more, but there is still, there is room within the Parks Bond appropriation, because two of the items that were originally forecast as part of the $11,250, were the half million dollar splash pad, which is currently not on any program anywhere, and the Springdale Golf Course irrigation improvements at $525,000, which were, that was a present from Mr. Valentine that that was included in the $11,250, those were more appropriately paid for from the Spring, the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. So there, so why this is higher than was budgeted, there is certainly some, some movement within the Parks Bond funds that can go towards that, and we could, you know, grants have been made, for example, the, in the consent agenda, we approved the $400,000 grant from Michigan for Booth Park from MDTNR Trust Fund. So it's kind of fluid and moving, but I think this is just, I think the Parks and Rec Job Board did a fantastic job, along with city staff, of really being responsive to the community input, of refining the plan. I watched all the meetings and, except for the people who want things that are not part of the Parks Bond, the adult fitness basketball court, which can be future items, I thought that you guys just did a great job of getting everybody towards consensus and really positive feelings at the end of the last meeting, to the, you know, the neighborhood is happy, and I'm, I'm just delighted, so.
And your intense interest in this, you watched those meetings, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All of them.
Excellent.
Like I said, and sat on the Parks and Rec Board for 14 years before I got to the commission.
Commissioner Kozlowski, you had...
Yeah, I do. First off, I want to echo Commissioner Long's thanks for everyone involved in this process, on the Parks Board and the Parks Department. As you said, you know, you really did a wonderful job accommodating lots of incoming requests for lots of different features and things. I mostly just wanted to confirm something, it looks, from, from the images, like this is the case, but Carrie, I believe, had mentioned that people in the neighborhood had, had suggested some misgivings, that it is a very, very large structure, and they were sort of concerned about views. I believe it had been brought up in a Parks meeting that between the existing and the new trees, most residents, well, their view of the structure will be obscured, is that an accurate statement?
That is our belief, correct.
Okay. And then, are we, I apologize, but are we discussing the parking now, or we're going to do that as a separate motion?
Yes.
All right, that was my, my main comment on the playground, thank you.
Commissioner Hague. And I, I want to say, something I meant to say earlier, I should say, please address questions and comments to the chair.
We agreed a few months ago to have a community survey, to understand what the community wants. To me, this is a really good example of giving the community what the community wanted to have, and providing it in just an extremely beneficial, I'm trying to think of the best word, beneficial form. So I'm very happy to see that. The other thing, another observation really is, in the previous commission, there were three of us that had small children, now there are only two of us, so between Commissioner Kozlowski and myself, we have to be the ones that advocate for those that aren't old enough to advocate for themselves. Commissioner Schaefer was very adamant about that, it was her business as well, so it's our job to do that. So I'm glad that you're as enthusiastic, plus I know you live around the corner, so your kids are going to use this one. So it's very pleasing to see that, and we'll see how this develops with other parks in the future and what gets presented. A lesson for all of us from the last time we had a discussion about playscapes and play structures, was that we had, we all had opinions on them. We had lots of opinions about what it should look like, and rightly so, we were actually somewhat reprimanded that our opinions weren't so important as what the people that asked for, what they got in other parks, wanted to have. So you wanted to have something inclusive, we've got it, we've got, I'm impressed, honestly. That, that central structure is, I might crawl up in it. My kids will. But as far as the size, well, there are trees that are bigger than that in the park already, just simple as that. It's 20-something feet high, well, that's an immature tree, we've probably got 80-foot trees in that park, so I don't think that's going to be a problem. Also, anything to do with the colors of it, we were, that was one of the things we were reprimanded, we were thinking about, also, do you colors in a previous park, structure? Nope, have at it, make it what, what appeals to kids, quite frankly. If that's what everybody asks for, give it to them. Very happy, that's why I tried to be the second for this.
Yes, Mayor Protemlaw.
I echo all the sentiments. My, my oldest was born in 2003, my youngest was born in 2007. I've spent a lot of time in Birmingham parks over the years, not anymore, except for when grandchildren come, but that's another, another, another time, another place. I think it's, it's amazing, the only thing that I ever thought that we could always use more of is park benches. I always felt like people ran to the park benches and they just camped out there and that there was no spots, and especially if you have people, children or what have you. More park benches, like, you could never have enough park benches, and I, I tried to count on the map, I think there's like, six for this, for this rec, maybe there's more? Because I'm looking on the drawings, so I, so do we, do we, may I ask a question?
Done, you may.
Thank you.
Address it to the chair.
How many park benches are there in the park?
To the chair, if I may?
Yes, of course.
I believe it's around 15?
Oh, wow.
Plus or minus, because in addition to new benches that we are placing within the playground perimeter itself, we are also relocating and utilizing all the regular park benches that are already existing on the park.
Okay.
Or can be put into the park, so there'll be quite a few bench locations, including that swinging bench and a couple picnic tables in there, in addition to picnic tables that already exist in the park, that will be sort of placed around in the grass areas.
Okay.
Are, may I ask, are there opportunities, as there always have been, for donations of park benches and, that are, are dedicated, dedicated to people?
Yes, absolutely.
Are we making that known, well-known?
We are, and we will continue to do so, even more so.
Excellent, thank you, great job.
Mr. Hoss.
I want to thank Carrie and Lance and Scott for going with such a wonderful survey. My question, Mr. Mayor, is, did the survey change the plans to accommodate the wishes of the neighbors?
I think you're referring to the, the survey. We haven't done this. We have a survey, and then we have the survey through...
For Poppleton?
Right.
Are you referring to the one for Poppleton?
Yes.
Then yes, it definitely impacted the design with the swings, and...
The overhead ladder.
Yep, the overhead ladder.
The extra spinner, moving the sandbox.
Sandbox, yeah. There's multiple items.
Okay, that's, I hope Pembroke goes as well, and I appreciate Commissioner Hague mentioning when the survey came to us a couple months ago, how there were real opinions about the colors, and we should go with the neighborhood's colors, and since it was an overriding choice on their part, it was not smart of us to be giving our own preferences. Thank you.
Any comments from the public? If you're online and you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, raise, use the raise your hand function. And in the room, we have someone?
I'm the only one, huh? Patty Blair, 485 Ribbon Oak. It all looks fabulous. I have a couple of questions, if I can ask questions, still.
You may.
Okay. You've answered my question about the height. I'm still hearing from neighbors that the three stories, 26 feet, seven inches is high, it's a big structure. Can you tell me about what happens once the top of the slides end? Is there a way for kids at the very top of the slide to get out of that and get to the very top? Because that's another, what, five feet up there? I'm kind of asking on behalf of some of my neighbors that are asking.
Sure, yeah, through the chair.
You know what I mean, like, you, you climb up to the very top, you're a climber?
Yep.
And you're at the top of the slide, yee-haw. Can I, can I get out of that top and go up to the visibility perforations that are at the top?
You cannot get outside. So climbing up to the top happens internally in the structure.
Okay.
Once you're up in that upper level, that is the specific reason why those are tube slides or tunnel slides.
Okay.
Because you can only enter them from the inside. Because you can only enter them from the inside. There's no exterior access. It's not like an open slide where you can go out of the slide hood and stand up.
Yeah.
Or anything like that. So it's fully enclosed.
Okay.
We're required to fully enclose once we get above a certain height in any play structure. That's just for safety reasons, so that people don't get on the outside of it.
Okay.
And what you may not have also noticed is we even have blocks on the tube slides, because there will be kids that'll try to walk up, but there, there are blocks to try to prevent them from going past a stairway on the outside.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And it fully complies with the safety codes for playgrounds.
Great. I was reading also about the product, about the Vollo Air, and there's a, there's an option when it's actually ordered to choose, I said it earlier, high visibility perforations. You talked at the meeting in September about it was an option to sort, I'm not going to say decorate them, but some of them could be, look like leaves, or it could be, if this were a system in Florida, you might have fish on there or something. Is there any plan to do that yet and make it as transparent as possible?
If I may?
Yeah, please.
Currently, it's the standard perforation that's on there, which is the most recommended.
Okay.
I'm not aware, actually, because this is a fairly new product introduced last year as far as, so the two options that she's referring to is there is an option to customize the perforations to actually create either letters or a scene of some type.
Kind of theme.
It is additional cost to do that, but that is, it was an option that was available. And then the high vis perforation is, it's, it's a slightly larger open on the perforation. There are some that may think that introduces potential other issues, but that, that was, that is an option available, again, for an additional cost, because it's not the standard. The ones that is in Dearborn, the structure that is there has the standard on it, so that would be an option to, for somebody to take a look at it.
Maybe something just to think about.
So did we consider any of that stuff?
In Dearborn, they had lettering.
They had a name, right?
They had a name. And quite frankly, I think that it's less visible.
Yeah. When you put the letters in, it does obscure some parts, because instead of it being uniformly open, it, it varies in order to create those letters. So it can create some spots that are a little less visible than others, with it being uniform, uniformly perforated, then it's the same all the way around.
Got it.
Okay. Then my last thing I wanted to ask about was the potential of a permanent restroom at some point, and that is Area J by the parking. And I'm assuming that at some point, that's going to involve the city someday with water lines and sewer lines. And it's my personal opinion that it's not located in a very good spot, even if it's a temporary one for now. It's right at the base of residential homes. There's three houses along here with driveways. And that location, almost at the corner of Kennison and Oxford, is right outside somebody's family room windows. And I'm not, I'd like to see, if I have a chance for an opinion eventually, that the restrooms are located further back into the actual play area. I think realistically, if you have kids and parents, wheelchairs, accessibility walkers, whatever, that need to use the restrooms, they're going to be going a little bit of a distance from the play area to get to the restroom anyway. So at some point, with the mister, right, the, there's a mister, a water line's going to have to be put in for that, along with the drinking fountain, that possibly that restroom location, temporary and eventually permanent, would be located more in the area of the play structure, not obviously right on top of it, but in the back, perhaps a little more away from the main road of Oxford. I think putting it on top of Oxford is going to create more traffic with city employees, all of us going to use the John in the back, in the park. It, it's just a thing.
Thank, no, thank you.
You know, I think it's a little bit close to Oxford and if it's temporary, eventually, I mean, they've got to put water in, you know, eventually, so that's my thinking.
You raise a very good question, question that I had. Could you explain, first of all, what do you mean by temporary? We have temporary in many of our parks, but they're removed in the winter, right? So are we basically talking about a porta potty like the rest of them? Did you anticipate any screening?
Yep.
And how did you arrive at the location as opposed to any other location?
Yeah, so as regards to screening, that's part of the reason why it's a little more costly to have it there to begin with. But the purpose of the location is that a lot of times it's coming or leaving the park is when they need to use the facility. And that's why we put it closer to the street, to make it a little easier to use for the, you know, ADA accessibility. That was the main part.
If I could just add too, it's very difficult to have it serviced if it's set too back into the park and we don't want to have trucks that are coming to clean it, go through all the wonderful equipment and crunching up our sidewalks.
And will it be serviced at the same rate or as other or more frequently? How, how are we doing in general on the, do we get complaints about the odors emanating from any of these?
So in general, service rate is dependent on usage. There's a minimum of once a week, but there are locations where we get higher usage that require multiple cleanings a week. So it depends on usage.
Okay.
It could be...
And how do you know, how do you gauge usage? Is there a gauge?
I mean, it's a little bit, a little bit of actual looking in. Our, also, our PortaJohn company that we use does report to us if they seem like it's excessively dirty, they'll let us know so that we can make the judgment call on adding an extra cleaning in. They're very proactive with us.
So what I hear you saying is that you did consider the location carefully, that there are reasons why you put it where it's going and that you're, oh, screening, that what you're going to put in is going to be serviced regularly, often enough that it's not going to be a nuisance, correct?
And if...
And you said something about screening?
Yep.
Or didn't?
Yes. We intend to have screening.
Like what kind of screening?
At this time, I think it was wood fence was really what we were leaning towards.
Okay. Commissioner Hague. Uh, wait, I'm sorry.
That's it?
We good?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Anyone else? Commissioner Hague.
Isn't the, isn't the location also sometimes driven by police ability to monitor? And so that would require it to be somewhere closer to the road?
It can make it much easier, that is correct. You don't want to obscure it too much, or else they can't see it when they're driving by on patrol.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Although we try to make the, like, in the case of Booth Park, we're trying to make it an attractive building, so what you do see isn't, you know...
Speaking of police, is there, are you putting cameras?
That's not part of this project.
And is, is, my final question more for Lance. Are any, is any of this equipment the kind of stuff that teenagers tend to abuse or show up late at night, you know, when they shouldn't be there? I assume we're going to have hours?
Yeah, it'd fall under a normal park hours.
Okay. And was there consideration of that by your, by your committees? And is that, do you anticipate any issues? I want you to say no. This is going to be great. Kids aren't going to be smoking pot there at night.
Well, it, you know, you can see through the tower, so that's helpful. At Booth Park, you can't see through the tower and we often get graffiti, so I think the selection of materials in this tower-like structure helps, you know, to deter that from happening. Can't guarantee anything, of course, but it is visible. You know, if you shine a light in there at night from the street, you know, you'll be able to see if there's activity.
Booth Park does have, there are cameras at Booth Park now?
We are, there are some, yes. The police have some that they've put in. Yeah, I think it's two.
And no, no interest on their part in putting them here, or they're wait, it's sort of a wait-and-see thing?
It's two separate packages, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Like, the police's camera system as it exists currently is part of what has existed currently at Booth. This, we don't have any power directly tied to this project or anything like that. It would be more part of like a master planning in the, the future for those future items that we've discussed would be great things to add to the park as a whole.
Okay. If there's no further questions or comments, we have a motion, a second, public comment, last chance, online. Mr. King, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Anthony Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Kozlowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Commissioner Kolb?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
Commissioner Treeslong?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Mayor Baller?
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're excited to see you.
How parked.
Moving right along.
Parking.
Parking. We've got to talk about parking. I'm open to having a motion.
I'll make a motion. If I may?
Sure.
Can we not discuss things a little bit before going to motions?
No, we're going to go to a motion and then we'll discuss it.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution to approve the design and installation of five parallel ADA parking spaces. Option D, along Oxford Street, as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Board. Funding is available in the Parks, other contractual services account, number 101.0-751-000.811.0000 for a not-to-exceed amount of $80,000.
Second.
Now we can discuss. You made the motion, so you can speak to it if you want.
I don't have, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think that it's important for those who did not watch the meeting, just to state that, that the Parks and Rec Board believed in the importance of providing protected parking that allowed people who need to use ADA spaces with, you know, who have handicap placards to have the space to safely get kids in and out of cars, unload wheelchairs, not just using street parking. So that's why the, the spots are inset. It's obvious that the parallel spaces are a much better option for the park than the angled spaces, because they're much less destructive and they don't require the removal of trees. And that the Parks Board was concerned about providing just these dead, five dedicated spaces, and five was the number they came up with as opposed to nine, because they thought it was less intrusive to, and that they'd be clustered more towards the center of the park rather than near the intersections on either end. And near, as Scott said, and near the cutouts that they're going to have. So you, if you get out on the street with a wheelchair, you'll have a ramp access, a cut into the carriage sidewalk. But that, they believed that the parking needs of the, the people who don't need the ADA spaces could be absolutely supported by the existing on-street parking on both sides of Oxford, and that's why they didn't call out spaces for them in particular.
Thank you. Commissioner Host.
My question would be, why five?
Why five?
It's what the Parks Board came up with.
It's what the Parks Board came up with.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Mr. Kozlowski.
Directing my questions to you. So I had a, a couple of questions. The first one was a sort of a follow-up on Commissioner Host, but I think Mr. Zelensky already kind of addressed it. So I had thought, well, maybe instead of doing, cutting the curb and stuff, we would just say, well, let's just prohibit parking on the east side of Oxford, and then we can stripe ADA parking spots on the west side, and we can stripe five. And if it turns out we needed more than five, well, we can stripe some more. And if it turns out we needed less than five, well, we can reduce it, right? We have, it would be more flexible. But it sounds like perhaps there is going to be construction costs associated with even, it is not so simple as you just paint some ADA spots. Is that, is that an accurate assessment of, of what you're saying?
If I may?
Please?
Yes. To clarify, I had discussions with Melissa Cota about what would happen if we were even to consider just painting on the road edge. And that was the first thing that she pointed out is, well, we'd have to get surveys to verify each of these individual spaces meet ADA requirements, which includes a 2% cross-slope requirement that can't be exceeded. So I can't say with confidence one way or another if we'd have to tear up sections of it, but historically, when we've added ADA spaces to areas, we've had to make adjustments to the road in order to make them compliant. So it's an assumption that every time we would do that, we would need it here. Additionally, she has major concerns with the fact that we'd only have 16 feet, give or take, if we kept it in an eight-foot space, which again, is very tight to accommodate as an ADA space. It's not that, it's not against any rules or regulations, it's just an acknowledgement that that's a very tight space for them to be working out of.
Okay. And then, so my, my only concern, and this is, I'm going to turn this into sort of a two-parter question, my only concern with cutting in is that it sort of has this side effect of widening the street, right? We have more pavement, more pavement sort of encourages people to feel comfortable driving faster, and we don't want people feeling comfortable driving faster near our new playground. And I see in the diagram, striping at the intersection of Mohegan and Oxford, I don't believe those intersections are striped right now. Would we be able to, is, is that part of the plan when we do this project, to stripe that intersection? Would it be possible to even add some signage, some, you know, pedestrian crossing signs, slow children at play, something to really accentuate the fact that we are anticipating a lot of children crossing the street here on their way to our new playground?
Yeah, so in limiting the number of spaces that we dedicate to this, it provides funding opportunity to go after those other items. As I said, we always budget it for 80 grand to be able to do something with the parking. We were looking at different cost amounts for how many spaces we put in, and it was ranging between 90, if we did all of them.
To do all of them, yeah, but it ranged between 93 and like 125.
Right. And so by taking it down to approximately half of that, that does provide some additional funds. We also would be able to put in some partial bump outs to help with that, because again, we're at 24 feet, so if we're extending into the park a little bit, we do have the ability to do some bump out to help keep it narrow or narrower, or I should say, at those crossing points for the intersection.
That'd be great. And is, is the five spots going to look sort of like three north of Mohegan, two south of Mohegan, or are we going to do the cuts basically as they are in option B and...
So we felt like keeping the five spots as close together as possible made the most sense, so we were, we were thinking that it would be the south of the Mohegan Street would be the area we'd put them in. But we do still leave that up to, if you guys want to provide commentary towards direction, if you think it's more appropriate to have a couple of spots on the north side and some on the south side, we're happy to try to accomplish that.
I don't really have strong feelings, I was just curious.
May I interject a question?
Yes, of course.
In answering that question, I would ask, if, if all those five spaces are full and a sixth person comes along, is there a drop-off? Because we don't have a diagram of...
So we'd be happy to work that in and have a drop-off spot in probably the area. If we were to do it how we were, we were thinking would be best, which was keeping them grouped together, we would either have, we would probably provide a drop-off spot on the north side and make the adjustments for that, so that there's a location where you can get out and get on.
I suspect that this is going to be a very popular playground, that it will become known regionally, and on Saturdays, it's going to be busting at the seams. So I think you'd better have a drop-off and then signage saying where to go, because if you've never been there, you may not know that you go down or turn right and go into the, and there's parking over there.
I have one fine.
Do you want direction from us on whether there should be a drop-off or not?
We would be happy to take that under advisement, yes.
We do have a motion on the floor, but how, how do we feel about drop-off, just as sort of a straw poll?
I'm okay with it.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Drop-off gets the nod.
You want me to amend my...
No, I don't think we need to.
We'd work it into our existing budget.
Thank you for yielding momentarily.
Of course. Just one, one final thing. So I know bike racks have been in a discussion. Are they going to be part of this right now, or are they an item for future consideration?
So we work with the planning department to add in bike racks in various locations around the city on a pretty regular basis. So it isn't officially part of this, but yes, it's an amenity that can be added.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Hague.
So ADA parking spots, not even a question, but observations I've got. So you said this street is 24 feet wide, which I remember from the Wimbledon discussion, because we were talking about the width there, and I noted that this and one or two other streets are 24 feet. So Mayor Baller made the observation that I was going to make about, uh, how popular the park will probably become, 'cause I think it's the only truly inclusive park in the city.
It will be.
So I actually, so two points about that. I think this actually really tells us why the Multimodal Board needs to hurry up and get reinstated. But second of all, that's actually to me why I don't think the five is the right answer. I actually prefer the angled parking, which is a little bit weird for me to say take away green space. But this park is 17.1 acres, I think, is what I read in there, something like that. So taking away an additional eight feet over a, I don't know, a couple of hundred, not even a couple of hundred feet length, isn't even a 1% surface area change. So I actually am much more in favor of the angled parking, because the other thing that strikes me is when we do those cutouts for ADA, quasi-B, then exactly to the point of the parking would restrict the width, 'cause then you get to eight-foot drive lanes, eight feet is the width of a standard full-size pickup truck these days. Um, so it will get tight. It'll be exceptionally tight on garbage day if there's anybody in the street. So that's why I think the angled parking spaces is really where we need to go, because other than that, um, I hope Commissioner Kozlowski's neighborhood enjoys being clogged with cars blocking all of the east-west streets, because that's what's gonna happen. And then driving through them will be even worse, 'cause those aren't even 24-foot wide streets. They're less than that. So that's my concern with the view as shown, and I'm actually advocating for spending more money and taking away a little bit of green space, which is not typical for me, by looking at C and thinking C is actually the better answer to accommodate mandatory ADA. There's no way around it. Mandatory ADA is a drop-off, and the ability to have more parking spots directly close to it, because very few people are going to want to actually, it's a Birmingham thing. Very people want to actually walk any distance from where they park their car to get to their destination. We found that in downtown with lots of the complaints about parking, and you're familiar with this. I think we're gonna get the same thing here, so Mohegan is gonna get incredibly busy with parked cars. So I actually don't agree with the motion for the quantity. I agree with the motion for ADA. That's not a debate for me, but I think we actually need to go with version C based off what I think will happen from observations from more than one of us.
Anyone who has not spoken to Kozlowski? Okay. Commissioner Long.
Um, just to clarify, um, chair, to, from Mr. Zelinski, that the 12 spaces that are envisioned in the angled parking, those are all ADA spaces.
Yeah, that is true. Oh, we know that to be the...
Yeah, so, so that doesn't impact people not wanting to walk, you know, to park closer to the, if they're all ADA. Um, the Parks and Rec Board and the neighbors were not fond of the angled parking. Uh, it also gives you the issue of then people backing into the street to exit the spaces, which is, um, a safety concern. Um, and, um, and the neighbors felt that it really impacted the residential feel of the neighborhood to have angled spaces, um, instead of the parallel spaces, and, um, and it's not a solution that they were happy with. Um, you know, if you, um, my suggestion would be that if you strongly feel that 12 is, is, um, a better number than five, then we could revisit the motion and increase the number from five back maybe eight plus a drop-off, but, um, that's only a force-based difference, but, um, there was no support really for the angled parking at all.
I hear you. I'm just observing from, I would suggest go see what, uh, streets adjacent to Booth Park look like on a Saturday.
Do what?
Look at the streets adjacent to Booth Park on a Saturday.
Oh, yeah, well, I think there...
And then that's what's gonna happen.
There is, I mean...
And that's with a lot of most places.
If I may, uh, I, I would be concerned about accommodating the cars and getting as many of the overflow cars into the park parking lot as we can, as opposed to having them park on Mohegan, Kennesaw, Rivano. So, but I don't think there's anything you can do about that right now, other than suggest signage, um, and see how it goes. So, further comments before we go to...
One, one comment. I, I just pulled up the actual parking lot for the park, and there is 14 parking spots plus a handicap spot, so maybe it's 13, that's hard to see, but it's between 13 and 15 parking spots with one being handicapped. So there's a fair amount of parking there, other than when they're doing a baseball game, and then that's a different story, but, um, there is quite a bit of parking.
And then, to get there, there are no pathways anticipated from the parking lot to the, other than going out to the street and walking down, right?
I believe there's a sidewalk for most of that that can be accessed.
Oh, yeah. I'm pretty sure there is. Maybe on the other side, right?
It's down here.
Oh.
Yeah. It's right there. Yeah, there's a sidewalk that starts right here.
There's an odd sidewalk that sort of goes to nowhere. Ends, yeah.
There's a house that is on the corner of Rivano and Oxford on the northwest corner, which is apparently, so the sidewalk ends there. I don't know if...
You might wanna look at having that sidewalk go to the parking, but...
Although, my, my view, having had kids, is they get out of the car in the parking spot and they'll make a beeline, beeline of the thing, it's the closest, fastest part across the grass.
Right. Okay. Further comment from the commission? Okay. Motion seconded and roll call?
Mayor Baller?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Kozlowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Commissioner Cold?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Therese Long?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, now we move to item C, a motion adopting an ordinance, amendment chapter two, administrative article two, city commission time and location meetings. This is intended to be a discussion not only of the start time of the meeting, but ways, uh, a discussion of ways that, uh, my fellow commissioners, city staff, and the public think we can tighten things up so that, uh, we can shorten the meetings and end them earlier than midnight. So, uh, I don't believe there's necessarily need for a staff report on this, correct?
It's up to you, but it's pretty straightforward.
Well, I think at some point, I'd like to hear what staff has to say, but I think first, uh, it makes sense to hear what commissioners have to say, and I'm hoping that commissioners have some ideas. Feel free to express ideas about procedures and also about the start time. Commissioner Host?
I'll start with, how about 7:00 PM? How's that meet with everybody?
We have 7:00 PM as a suggested start time. Do you have any other suggestions on how we might move things along?
No, because, uh, I'm reminded of when I first started here, there was, the old guard was very upset that we were going late, and I'm, I think that that has to do with the beauty sleep of those individuals, and as such, we're here to serve the public, and if it goes to 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM, we should do it.
I, I would only respond to that, Commissioner Host, that there are members of the public for whom we are doing, uh, work who want to participate but can't participate at 2:00 in the morning because they're in bed. So, so there's some question about whether, uh, a meeting is an open meeting if it goes past midnight, or even toward midnight, so, but I, I appreciate...
Yeah, that was my reaction to them wanting to stop the meeting at 10 o'clock.
Mr. Cold?
Uh, my opinion is start time has nothing to do with it. Um, because we'll fill the time, it doesn't close the back door. My opinion is, is structure the agenda so it's a timed agenda. So this topic takes five minutes, you know, the commissioners can be polled about the amount of commentary that they, they need to make on a particular topic before the meeting, and we allocate 15 minutes for that topic. That's it. It's done. And then we have to, and move on.
Okay.
So I just, I just don't believe changing the start time, with all due respect to Commissioner Chris Terhose, this, changing the start time doesn't, we'll fill whatever time, we can start at 5:00 in the afternoon if we wanted, we could still go to 2:00 AM.
Thank you. Commissioner, or Mayor Protem Long?
My opinion is that it's a combination of a number of different things, I think, for the start time. I think it can be, um, uh, if commissioners have questions about things that are on the agenda that are delivered to our, to our homes or to our inboxes on Thursday afternoon, the latest, um, that, that's something that they should be taking the responsibility of contacting city manager, um, maybe the city attorney, um, and asking their questions or getting that information, uh, outside the meeting, um, and coming, having done your homework to the meeting, so that we're not taking care, because if, if we all, if we all did that beforehand, um, then it would save an incredible amount of time on each topic, because we wouldn't have to have us, all of us wait while we all get our que, our questions answered. Also, it gives you time, if your questions are answered, to, to, to then pontificate the result of what you were, what, the information, what you received, um, and maybe that will, um, sway you in one way or another with regards to the way you vote. So I think start time should at least be 7:00. The thought process, from my understanding, was is that the start time was at 7:30 to allow those with families to go home and, and have dinner, um, and, and then come to the meeting. That has not been my experience, um, you know, because I come from the office, a lot of times racing to get here, um, that's not within, now, if that's something that is within the appetite of the whole group, you know, I can come at 7:30, I can come at 7:00, I can come at 8:30 if they want me to. But I think that there are other communities that start at 5:30. I think that's too early. Uh, I think 6:30, uh, or, or 7:00 are both good times to, to, to start. It will, it will get us out earlier. Um, I, I don't disagree with Commissioner Cold that we could fill that time, but I think the other things that I have mentioned, uh, coming prepared, getting your questions answered in advance, if you have any, uh, that can be answered in advance, obviously some may come up during the meeting, will help to move it along. I think that having a motion on the table first and then discussion helps to move it along as well. That motion can be, uh, withdrawn, that motion can be, um, can be modified from the discussion, uh, but I think, uh, tonight, as an example, things moved faster with those issues by doing that. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Is your hand up?
Yep.
Oh, Commissioner Hay.
So four of us sitting here have full-time jobs that require us to do our day job.
Uh, may, may I ask which four are those? Okay. I, I like to think I have a...
You said you were retired.
I'm semi-retired, I own a company and I...
Doesn't matter. You said you were retired. So four of us have, four of us have full-time jobs, and that was the sticking point, the last time you brought this up as well, that there were those of us that also had full-time jobs and being able to get here at the appropriate time, just as Mayor Protem pointed out. That hasn't changed. Now, I also asked the city manager about staff, because that was missing in your question originally. Now, he did ask it subsequently, but I asked her about that as well. And I got a lot of empathy for them because it is an extension of the day. The one difference, though, is they're not changing locations. We all have to change locations. So there is a little bit of a difference there that makes it harder, in effect, for staff, 'cause they're sort of sitting waiting, whereas we have transit time. Like, he said, he's rushed more than once. We've seen you rush in at 7:29, or a couple of minutes after, because of just office commitments. Commissioner Schaefer had the same issue, uh, quite a few times, that she was coming in at the last minute. It happens to many of us because of day job commitments. So I've got a lot of sympathy for the staff position of, it drags it out for them. It's not fun. I get it. But we are also struggling with our commitments, because this is effectively a voluntary job. The day job pays for the voluntary job. So I can buy a half hour, so what Commissioner Host suggested, I can, I can buy into that, but I think anything earlier than that, we're going to actually end up with absences, and that just drives, what do we do when we go to workshops? Because workshops, they're gonna start earlier as well. You're probably gonna have absences in workshops, because people have day jobs, and we can't always leave them. So I see an issue. I'm actually with Commissioner Cold that we will fill the time, because it takes however long it takes, even if we do homework, even if we do ask questions, half the cut...
I'm gonna interrupt one now, right now, in a way that's gonna move things along. Uh, the question, there are two questions. One is start time, and I've heard you say that you're okay with 7:00. That's what he said. That's great. I also ask for recommendations on how we can tighten up the meetings. If you have recommendations on how we can type, tighten up the meetings, bring them on. Otherwise, let's move along and have other people contribute to that discussion.
Can I finish making observations? Because apparently, we're doing things your way.
I like it's, like I said, it's important that we address the question, okay?
And there are ques, what I, what you interrupted me saying was, that we can ask questions ahead of time. I don't think you're gonna have all the questions to be able to answer them if we call you. I don't think you're gonna answer everybody's phone calls in time to be able to get all those answers. But what I've also found is, many times, when we get clarification of issues while we sit up here, it drives other questions that we hadn't thought of, and that's where some of the constructive and very healthy debate comes from. So I could come with 10 questions, by the time we've had the conversation, I've got another 15.
So what is the suggestion for tightening up the movement?
Provide what you're looking for. I'm asking you, where does that provide? Where does that pre-work that you've assumed nobody does actually do anything?
Okay, I didn't make that suggestion. Mayor Protem Long made that suggestion, okay?
You've insinuated in the...
I, I agree with that suggestion, that if you are able to garner as much information and answer whatever questions you have in advance, that makes you more prepared to address the issues and answer the question. We're here to do the city's business. In most cases, we're asked to either approve or deny a motion. That's it. It's almost always binary. Occasionally, we try to change things. I think in many cases, we try to micromanage what the city is doing, and, and that is not our job as a board. If you wanna micromanage, try to do it in the background. So you call, uh, the city manager, you have some questions and concerns about an item, she's open to suggestions. If you suggest to her that maybe we approach this slightly differently, or can you add this little item, she might actually do it, and then your, uh, your goal will have been met. So that's, I think that's what, part of what Mayor Protem Long was talking about.
And my one point of clarification, if I may?
Yes.
I wasn't suggesting that, that the commissioners call the mayor. I was suggesting the commissioners, 'cause that would be inappropriate under certain circumstances of opening a meeting.
It's okay.
But, but I was suggesting to call city manager, the assistant city manager, city attorney, um, if, if your questions can be answered. And I, and I 100% agree that not all questions are going to be able to be answered in advance, that there are, there are things that come up during the, during the discussion that may drive other questions. But if you're asking me how to tighten up the meeting, that is one strong component that would result in saving time, um, and, and getting, getting people's views and decisions made faster and getting us out of here. One more point, we are here to serve the community, but that, we are not serving the community when we have somebody that wants to get a slump or something else that is here at 11:45 at night. That is not serving the community. We need to do better as a commission to reduce the length of meetings, so that we do not put our citizens and business owners sitting in the audience at 11:30, midnight, or even sometimes 12:30 or 1:00, I think I recall, 1:00 was, went to like 1:00 in the morning. That is not serving our community. That is not serving our community and the residents that we serve.
Thank you. So we have several suggestions. You know, there's going to be stuff that the chair does, as I did tonight and plan to do going forward with the support of the city manager and the city attorney. This idea of trying to get a motion on the floor more quickly. We're not trying to stanch any debate. There's no, nobody's requiring a city commissioner to pick up the phone and call Ms. Ecker. We're inviting you to do that. And so that's my response to that. If no one else has any... I had some notes lengthy. I'm going to try and shorten them up. I do want to hear, though, about staff because I, and I know you, city manager Ecker, are very concerned about staff. Last week, we had a staff member here past midnight. You guys have to go home, unwind, go to bed, and get up lord knows when, a lot sooner than I have to get up, and that includes some of the commissioners who have day jobs, and you come to a staff meeting, right? Would you like to tell us some of the comments you had from staff?
Just for the record, the staff meetings, sometimes I bump them back an hour or two and send everybody a text and say, hey, you were here till 2:30. We're moving the staff meeting till 11:30, what have you. But anyways.
What time do you generally have the staff meeting?
9:30.
Okay.
I did, at your request, and Commissioner Hayek did also ask this of me separately via email, send an email out to all of the department heads, who are primarily the ones who attend these meetings. There's 19 department heads, and I did get feedback from a vast majority of them. Couple of things, terms of start time, unanimous support for starting earlier. Half of them said 5:30, half of them said 6:00. So just passing it along. We all know that we're public servants and we're serving the public, and it's your decision what you want to do, and we're here, and we will come regardless of what time the meeting starts. But you asked for their opinion, that's what it is. The majority of them also agreed there should be a maximum length to the meeting regardless of what time that it starts, and that the only way to extend the meeting after a maximum length would be to have a majority vote to extend, whatever that time might be. And I will tell you, after working with the planning board for probably 15, 20 years, they had, where the meeting had to end at 11:00, and if you wanted it to extend, because there's times when you need flexibility. Something, you're in the middle of an issue, or, you know, somebody's been waiting all night and they have a two-minute issue, that there has to be a majority vote to extend it, and they can only extend it in 15-minute increments. So that was one suggestion.
May I interrupt? Is that part of their rules of procedure? Is that something they voted upon and imposed on themselves?
It's their rules of procedure, and you saw tonight, I put the rules of procedure for the commission in front of you. They're on the website, but in case you wanted to look at it.
But if we wanted to do that, we'd have to agree to do that, right?
Correct. Correct. So some of the other suggestions, again, have a hard stop at a certain time or have a hard stop in a number of hours. So I think Commissioner Cole mentioned that maybe we should have set times. For instance, one hour for announcements, appointments, recognition, one and a half hours for consent and new business, 0.5 for public comments, commissioners. That gets stickier, obviously, because it depends on the issue and what's going on, but that was a recommendation. There was also a recommendation that public comments should be timed and be held a little bit more accountable to a timer. They reference it in Oakland County, there's a timer on the wall, and it goes off in three minutes when your time is up. And then there was also a recommendation that consider holding, now I know, obviously, from the discussion tonight, this probably isn't going to go over well, but the suggestion was that maybe you have workshops during the afternoon, since no official city business occurs and no votes are taken, that that would free up to have some more time for discussion and then have the debating and the actual motions and actions happening at the public, at the regular city commission. Also encouraging, the last one I heard, and I'm kind of putting them all together now, not calling out anyone individually for who said what, encouraging in allowing employees to Zoom in more so would help balance the workday a little bit. As you mentioned, people are sitting around for multiple hours, they're sitting around during the meeting, waiting for their turn to speak, and for people with young kids, that gets harder with childcare and so on.
Do you require, we don't require them to be...
No, we don't require it. We allow it. I think that there's...
You allow them to be on Zoom?
Absolutely.
I see their names on there frequently, so I see no problem with that.
Yeah. And I think that the fact of the matter is that everybody that's involved in a difficult subject matter knows that it's better to be in person, right? But it is allowed, and we, and I do allow it. People, I don't tell everybody to come in on Zoom every night, but anyone, anytime anybody says, hey, do you mind if I do this via Zoom? I say, no problem, so.
Okay. Is that...
That's it.
Summarize staff commentary?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Host, you had a comment?
I was just thinking, Commissioner Kozlowski hasn't said how he feels about 7:00.
Well, Commissioner Kozlowski will have the opportunity to say whatever he wants, if he A raises his hand or B votes on a motion that might come to the table.
I just like keeping everyone in suspense.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes. Mayor Emeritus Long.
So as to start time, I just looked up and saw the Birmingham Public School meeting start at 7:00 p.m. My concern is not only our preferences and staff preferences, but also the ability of the public, who often work jobs, to be able to get here to attend meetings at the end of their workday and, you know, have, see their kids, have dinner. And so if 7:00 p.m. is acceptable for school board meetings, it's probably acceptable for us, so I would also support a start time of 7:00 p.m. I think earlier than that, it's difficult for people to get here, to have the other spouse home from work, childcare, et cetera. So I think 7:00 p.m. is a good initial move to try to get us done earlier. And as to suggestions for making the meetings more efficient, I think that all of us can practice being more judicious and circumspect in our remarks. Same thing that you said, if someone's made an appointment, or, excuse me, made a point, you can say, I agree or I disagree without repeating it in full. It does become very conversational up here at times. People relate stories sometimes more than once, and I think that we can all be more careful to be, like I said, more judicious, more circumspect, and more efficient in our comments, and that would speed things up significantly.
Thank you. Excellent comments from everyone. Commissioner Cole?
I'd like to make a motion to change the start time of the city commission meetings to 7:00 p.m.
Second. I think that you must make a motion specifically with regard to the ordinance. So that would be, see, motion adopting ordinance amendment to blah blah blah.
I'd like to make a motion adopting an ordinance amendment to chapter 2, administration, article 2, city commission, section 2-29, time and location of meetings, which will now change regular city commissions, change regular city commission meetings to be from 7:00 p.m. to...
We didn't debate that part.
Well, hold that.
10:00 p.m.
What does this commission have any desire to mimic what the planning board does and have a hard stop time, after which motions must be made and approved by a majority to continue in some number of minute increments? I would be delighted to hear.
You know, I think it's great that you're trying to shorten the meetings, but I think if we go to a final time, that it doesn't show the respect for whatever's on the agenda with regard to our citizens. Namely, I thought it was abhorrent that we had to redo, that we were going to do another 15 minutes after 10:00 o'clock. I think that that's pampering the baby, and we shouldn't be doing that.
I want to clarify, the rule that we had several commissions ago was 10:00 p.m. on nights that we had workshops where we started at 6:00.
I did only pick that as an example.
Okay, great. So I might ask, I might ask the city attorney to give an opinion as to, you've mentioned before, I think publicly, certainly privately, your concern that meetings that go beyond a certain amount of time and decisions that are made at a certain amount, at a certain time of the night are prob, may be deemed problematic because of the hour and because of the inability of most residents, or many residents, or residents who want to participate but who can't because it's after midnight and they need to be in bed. So to one of you, I see, hold on, she's getting up. I think you understand my question.
Only because we've discussed this before. Yes, meetings must be accessible to the public, and if they're going to the wee hours of the night, and you can define wee hours as you choose to, is it really accessible for participation? Sure, residents can go back and watch the meetings, but then they're not actively participating with its government, which is the whole point of the OMA, to be an active participant with you making decisions. So if it's 11:30, 12, even 11:00, is that really accessible? And that's a decision that only you can answer.
Okay, so I take it that there's no case law necessarily out there, no instances where someone, somewhere in the state of Michigan, has challenged a decision or ruling or the legitimacy of a meeting that went beyond midnight?
I don't know. I did not spend the time researching that. I can just speak from our opinion and just common sense. Is it accessible when one has to be in bed for their jobs in the morning? Is it really accessible?
Okay, that's a good question, and it's one I would ask all of you.
Observation, then, if I may.
Go on.
To the city attorney's point, if I were to call a hard stop, I would say midnight. And the reason I say midnight is because that's the end of the day of the posted meeting. If we go past that, technically, it started into the next calendar day, even though it's a contiguous meeting. Do I like being here at 2:00 o'clock in the morning? I think our latest was actually 2:45. No, I don't, but there were reasons why we were here that late. So Commissioner Host of paying justice to everybody that wishes to come in front of us is still valid. But if we were to draw a hard line, I would say it would be midnight, not earlier. The goal would be to finish earlier, but midnight, we should draw a line of acceptance for everybody's purposes.
Are you suggesting midnight as the end date in the ordinance?
If we have to choose one...
Are you in favor of...
And listening to the advice of the attorney about accessibility, I would be in preference of saying midnight as the last line.
Nobody said we have to choose one. So I'm just trying to determine whether you're saying, let's put midnight in there or let's not put midnight unless somebody forces us to. So I'm going to hold your thought, think about that for a minute. Does anybody else have any... Mayor Protem?
It is, in my opinion, is a balancing, it's a balancing to make sure that we comply with OMA. There has been a few instances in the last two years where we've had an open, like where it's an open meeting or a public, you know, what's it called?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, thank you. It's getting late now, so... A public hearing where we can't, we would not be able to end the meeting, or we would not be able to say, come back in two weeks when we've noticed it up, so there's...
Mayor Protem, I'm going to interrupt. Do you favor putting an end time on, and if so, what time?
I do. I think we should put, I think we should put an end time at either 11:30 or midnight with the option of a vote to extend in 30-minute increments if needed.
Okay, that's very specific. So we have a possible midnight, we have, I think you said 11:30?
11:30.
With increments of 30 minutes. Anyone else? Anyone want to weigh in on this? Because we're going to have a motion. I'd like to know that we can dispense with that motion quickly. So knowing how you feel about it, I think, Commissioner Host, if I understand, you are not going to be in favor of any end time.
Correct.
Okay, great.
And if I may...
And I respect that.
I was two terms on the school board. Most of my meetings went to 12:30 to 1:00 a.m.
Commissioner Kozlowski, this is one case where I am going to try to poll in advance a little bit. I don't like it when that happens, but you haven't said anything about...
I'm trying to be a model of efficiency, so.
Okay.
No, I think, I think a 7:00 p.m. start time is fine with me, and I think that'll give us a nice little buffer. And I think for, you know, reasons of being fair to staff, being fair to the public, and as Commissioner Hayek pointed out, not jumping into the next date, I think midnight seems like a reasonable end time. And, you know, the optionality to extend by 30-minute increments probably is a wise thing to do in case we have something that is absolutely emergent and absolutely must be dealt with that very meeting, so.
Yes, please.
Concur.
Concur. Wow. So...
Friendly amendment.
Are we ready to make a motion? You started, we cut you off, it wasn't seconded.
Yes, it was. I seconded it.
Did you hear Commissioner Hayek second that motion?
I didn't have that recorded.
I didn't hear it either. So we're going to go ahead, under the assumption...
You can do a friendly amendment to what you started.
Okay, so Mayor Protem, why don't you make the motion?
Okay. If I'm...
You may.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion adopting an ordinance amendment to chapter 2, administration, article 2, community, city commission, section 2-29, time and location of meetings, which will now change regular city committee, city commission meetings to be from 7:00 p.m. until midnight with the option of a vote of the commission, a majority vote of the commission, to extend past midnight in 30-minute increments.
Second.
Second. Is that clear enough? Okay. Second. We have a motion and a second. I don't believe it requires a roll call.
Do a roll call.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. I didn't ask for comment from the public. Is there anybody online? There's nobody in here, so. Sorry. Okay, we can now move on to several resolutions. Well, we have commission items for future discussion. A motion is required to bring up the item for future discussion if the next reasonable agenda, no discussion on the topic will happen tonight. Do any commissioners, Commissioner Host?
On the rules of procedure for the city commission, I go down to the minutes, and I'd like to make a resolution that we incorporate AI into helping us with the minutes.
Well, Commissioner...
Being more comprehensive, and they only are available a minute after you're done.
Yeah. It's interesting you should bring that up. I'm not sure it's an appropriate item for us to discuss and direct administration on, but just this evening, I was at the library for Rebecca Kraft's reception, and I believe it was Pam Grant was talking about Zoom's AI capabilities to write minutes. That doesn't mean that they would be the final minutes. There are many, there is a lot of technology out there. So I think your point is well-taken. I think it's the administration's job to administer. If you want to lay out that motion and see if it gets seconded and... If you want to lay out that motion and see if it gets seconded and approved.
I thought I did, but I'll do it again. We should incorporate AI into our minutes, not the final minutes, but it should be used.
I'm going to restate, you're making a motion that the commission discuss at its next reasonable opportunity, directing staff to use AI to help write the minutes for our meetings.
Yes.
Oh, second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay. All those opposed? Nay. Okay, motion passes. We will discuss directing staff. I agree with the concept, I'm going to say this, I agree, and I should have said it before the vote, but I'll say it now, I agree with the concept of that. That is not something I believe that this commission needs to discuss in a public meeting and have them, you know, it's something they need to do. It's like telling them to go pick up a pencil or reprogram a computer or whatever. But I'll leave it at that. Anybody else have discussion items for future discussion? Nope. Seeing none, we have commission discussion on items from prior meeting? None. I need three resolutions in quick succession to meet in closed session. They must be read aloud. Who would like to take on the podium?
So just for clarity purposes, I will have to recuse from two of the three closed session items. I can vote on the closed session, but I will not be present for two of them.
Is his statement of refusal sufficient, or do we need to know why or anything like that? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hague, for your recusal on two out of three items. Who would like to move Commissioner Long? Item.
Resolution to meet in closed session pursuant to MCL, Section 15.268, Section 8.1D of the Open Meetings Act, to consider the purchase or lease of real property up to the time and option to purchase or lease that real property is obtained.
Sorry. We have a motion second. Alex, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Kozlowski?
Yes.
Mayor Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
Commissioner Therese Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Okay, gee, another resolution. Someone like to read that?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
I may, like to make a resolution to meet in closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, Section 8.1H of the Open Meetings Act, to discuss a written attorney-client privileged communication.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Kozlowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
Commissioner Therese Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Long?
Yes.
Item H?
Resolution to meet in closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, Section 8.1E of the Open Meetings Act, to discuss pending litigation entitled Paul Wells versus the City of Birmingham at all U.S. District Court, Eastern District Court of Michigan, Court Case Number 225CV16340.
136, not 163.
Okay, 13640, TGPAPP.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Sorry. My bad.
That's why I'm saying that first name.
Just get used to it.
Commissioner Therese Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Host?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Anthony Long?
My apologies, yes.
Commissioner Kozlowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hague?
Yes.
Okay, we have removed from consent agenda, none. We have communications. There is a communication that appeared in our last agenda regarding the community house and a communication regarding Teuta. Under reports, we have commissioner reports, a notice of intention to appoint to the advisory parking committee, commissioner comments. Commissioner Hague?
Real short one. We didn't really get much of a chance to say thank you to former Mayor Therese Long at the last meeting for various reasons. I just wanted to be able to say thank you from all of us, and I think you did a good job, and I appreciate everything you've tried to teach everybody. Hopefully, it's been learned.
Thank you.
Commissioner Host?
By the way, I'm so pleased Mary Chavez is here, because if I make a boo-boo here, I hope, Mary, you'll straighten me out. Next month, we're going to have the 48th District Court. We're going to be asked to renew the contract with them. And since I've been sitting here, I'm pretty sure we've, we've paid for the services in the last six years approximately $2.5 million. Is that correct, Mary? I just picked that number.
Commissioner, hold on, sorry. I have a hand from the city manager, and I, what did you want to?
I just wanted to say, we, you are not scheduled to vote on the contract renewal. That's not up. It's to review the 48th District Court's budget that is anticipated to come on December 1st.
Okay, and you are here to discuss the first quarter financials, correct? And you have a comment, and I'm wondering what your comment is.
The comment is, I hope we take very seriously the fact that Tom Marcus and myself were in agreement that our number-one responsibility is fiscal responsibility, and this is a loser, and we need to be thinking about exiting the 48th District Court. And chances are, we can get a lot more people on Woodward to come in here and pay tickets for noise and speeding. We can do a lot better.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments?
Thank you, Mary.
Seeing none, we move to advisory board committees, commissioner reports and agendas. Any commissions or commissioners' reports? Legislation, city staff, first quarter financial report, first quarter investment report. You are here to answer questions, not to present. Any questions from the commission on these very important quarterly reports that I hope we've all examined? This is a fundamental part of the oversight of this government. Yes, sir?
Hey, wait a minute.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I have a question for Mary. You said that we didn't have to spend half a million dollars with regard to the 48th District Court. You know, can you explain that?
That was on the first quarterly, right? Yes. We did receive some, we did receive more money, because at the end of the year, at the end of September, during their audit, they tie out their books, and we have a bigger refund of our prepayments, because we pre-funded the court. So we received more money for this last year than previous years, where our prepayments were a lot higher than what they should be. So they reconciled it at the end of the year, and then we had a surplus, actually.
Wonderful.
Doesn't mean we paid less, we just paid it in advance, right?
And it's offset by the revenue brought in from all of the court fines and so on.
There is a staff report on the Fred Lavery construction schedule. Are we satisfied with that? Questions? Commissioner Hague?
So I love a good Gantt chart. And it's great, except it doesn't answer the question. The city manager's laughing, because I've already had this conversation with her.
Okay, is it necessary to bring it up?
Yes, it is, because I want them to listen to the question next time. Because I asked about what's the timing of the phases and what's the timing of street closures, and according to their Gantt chart, barricades for Haynes Line 107 is five days of the entire project. That's it. There is nothing in here about El Street closure, there is nothing about the actual duration of the closure on Haynes, but there is the duration of the closure on Woodward.
So I'm trying to understand the point of your, the point of your comment is to berate the staff?
Nope, no, it's not the staff at all. Ms. Ecker knows what I'm getting at. The project manager that was on the call last time did not listen to the question. I don't care about when they do drywalling. I don't think anybody in here cares about when they do drywalling. What we care about is when are you going to close down our streets and for how long? That's not detailed in here. That project manager needs to pay attention to the question, because it still wasn't actually answered.
That may be true, Commissioner Hague, but I'm not sure I understand how that's a matter of business for this commission. It just isn't. It's not a matter of business.
So closing, let me understand your question then. I'm going to do active listening. It's not a matter for this commission to understand when public streets are closed and made inaccessible to the public.
When that comes up as an agenda item, it most certainly is.
But it was, and it wasn't answered.
And you've discussed it offline with the city manager, and I ensure you came to some conclusion that she would assume, she would get the answer for you.
It's also answering a point that Commissioner Kozlowski brought up as well, asking about that timing for the sidewalks and the accessibility. So it doesn't actually answer his question. So it's helping him get the answer to this question from the last meeting.
Council, do we need a motion to go into closed session, or what do we need to do to move into closed session?
We're at Avenue, going to some session.
Yeah, you, the motions have already been made.
They've made the motion.
But I want to.
It's up to the chair to determine if we were going to go into closed session before reports or after reports. And if you want to continue debate, I am going to remind you that you have a very expensive attorney waiting for you.
Yeah, we're done with closed, we're done with these reports. We're going into closed session. Let's go. Let's go.
If we could turn on recording, it says it's being recorded. We just returned from a closed session in which we discussed an attorney-client privileged matter. I'd like to make a statement. The Community House recently announced plans to sell its building. This was a shock to the community and many legitimately asked can they do that? The answer may be found in the original and subsequent deeds to the property as well as other documents that seem to suggest no, they can't. The Community House, in the opinion of this commission, is a public trust. Its value cannot and must not be measured in dollars. The land and building were donated to serve the community. Birmingham residents who for generations have put their hearts and souls into that building do not want to see it fall into private hands. And this commission will use each and every available means to see to it that it remains a community asset used for the purposes for which it was donated. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adjourned.